Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the joint meeting of the Evanston Plan Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals for Wednesday, August 8, 2018. I think our first order of business is to appoint a chair for this meeting.
And I move that the Chair of the Plan Commission, Colby Lewis, be Chair of this meeting.
Is there a second?
Seven.
All right. So do we need to do just a voice vote or a roll call?
Voice vote should be sufficient.
Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
All against? All right, it's decided. So, let's see. What is the first thing that we need to do? So, the first thing that I would like to do is to introduce, we have a new Commissioner, Commissioner Jennifer Draper, who is the second from the end. Welcome to the Plan Commission. So, the next thing that I will do is to talk a little bit about the process. First of all, we'll have a staff presentation, and then the petitioner will be able to present. That would be followed by questions from the public, if there are any of the petitioner. So if there are anyone, is anyone, from the public who wishes to speak tonight, they should sign up on the list outside the door. All right? Is anyone planning to speak tonight? I'd like to swear you in if you are. All right. Do you promise to tell the truth? Yes, okay, good. Thank you. All right. So, after that, the petitioner can answer questions brought up by the public, and then we'll take questions, we're going to take questions first from the Plan Commissioners, and then from the Zoning Board of Appeals Board Members. And then, we can, we will hear any statements that public people would like to make. So, if I can just clarify, the first portion from, from the public are questions only. They have to be correct, questions that can be answered, and then later on, you'll get a chance to make statements. All right? After that is done, the petitioner can make any clarifications or, or re-question people. And then, at that point, we will close the public hearing. The Plan Commission will make their deliberations motions and decisions, and then we'll pass the gavel over to Chair Beth Burns, Mary Beth Burns, and then the zoning board will, will do their deliberations. All right? So, staff, please.
If you, if you wish, we could do a roll call and establish quorum for both bodies.
Establish quorum. Yes. So you didn't kick me. All right. So, let's do quorum.
Sure. So for the Plan Commission, Commissioner Bileal, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Dubin, Commissioner Goddard.
Here.
Commissioner Halleck, Commissioner Isaac.
Here.
Commissioner Pogozzi, Commissioner Draper.
Here.
And Chair Lewis.
Here.
Okay? And for the Zoning Board of Appeals, Board Member Araldala.
Here.
Board Member Collin.
Here.
Board Member Deacon.
Here.
Board Member Gingold. Board Member McCauley.
Present.
Board Member Mainschiff.
Here.
And Chair Burns.
Here.
So both, both bodies do have a quorum this evening.
Now, Mr. Mandham, would you like to make your presentation?
Sure. Michael Griffith, the Development Planner, will be making the, the presentation regarding the text amendment and the special use and major variation.
Do I need to push this? All right, good. Hello, everyone. So, the, the proposed text amendments being considered tonight relate to a new business that's being proposed to locate at 2119 Ashland Avenue. It's a combination of a brew pub, restaurant, event space, car, storage, displays, facility in the MXE zoning district. And the text amendments being triggered by the fact that, in the zoning ordinance currently, craft brewery is a permitted use in that location, but a craft brewery does not allow restaurants. And, on the flip side, restaurants are not a permitted use in that zoning district. So the text amendments are trying to achieve allowing that use to be located in that, in that zoning district.
If you can try to speak into the microphone and see if, is it, is the light on?
Yes, yes. So currently, this is the existing language for a craft brewery, primarily a facility that produces, produces beer. And the very last sentence is the key sentence, sentence here that prohibits the restaurant, restaurant use. This is the current definition of a craft distillery, a micro-distillery. And, again, a facility that produces alcohol, but is limited to basically tasting rooms, so it doesn't, again, allow for a restaurant use. This is the current definition of a restaurant, and simply just relates to, to typical restaurant use and not a combination brew pub facility. So this lists the, the summary of what we're trying to achieve here. Creating a, a new use for brew pub, creating a definition for that, combining the definitions of a craft brewery, the micro-distilleries, into one use, one definition. Also allowing a restaurant to be located in that type of facility and not just limited to a tap room. And then treating a craft brewery the, the same as a restaurant in terms of where they're This is the proposed definition of a brew pub. Essentially, we're trying to define it as a restaurant that does brewing onsite, that allows for onsite consumption. And this is the proposed definition of what we're calling a craft alcohol production facility that really tries to encompass beer, wine, other alcoholic spirits in primarily a production facility, but also allowing the potential for a restaurant as an accessory use. This is the current and proposed chart noting where these uses are currently allowed, whether permitted or special uses, and then noting what's being proposed in terms of the brew pub and alcoholic production facility. Generally, we're trying to treat brew pubs the same as we treat restaurants in terms of where they're allowed, permitted or special uses. And we're doing the same thing for the, the proposed craft alcoholic beverage facility, just treating them the same as we have before. This is a map that is showing areas of the city that are zoned MXE and MUE. So these are the areas that, if the text amendment is proposed, would allow brew pubs as a permitted use. And I think that's it for the text amendment.
We'll go through the, just an overview of the, the special use and the variation as well, and then we can come back to the standards when we're in deliberations for, for each board.
So moving on to the special use, the other part of the request is for an event space or banquet hall at this location. This is the area zoning map. The property is shown in hashed marks, as well as a red dot that probably can't see.
Is the pointer working? It's a little hard for people to identify. There we go.
It's right, it's right there. So this is Simpson and Ashland, right here. So the, the proposed banquet hall, they proposed to have the food service catered by others. Generally, their hours, Monday through Thursday, 10, 10 a.m. to 11, 12 a.m., Friday and Saturday hours, 11 a.m. to 1 a.m., with a staff of between 10 and 30 people. They proposed to have parking onsite, as well as valet parking offsite. And they're working on agreements with nearby property owners to provide parking elsewhere. They're looking to have two to, about, two to five events per month, the size of the events, 20 to 300 people. And typical type of events, weddings, corporate events, family gatherings, things of that This is the proposed floor plan. Again, this is Ashland Avenue. Parking on the south side of the building. Their entrance is right here. Primarily restaurant seating in the front, event space towards the back, brewing facilities in the back, and the car storage area. In addition, they're asking for variations. They're planning to construct, in addition to the front of the building, also in addition to the rear of the building. Those additions will require variations from the setbacks. A front yard setback of 10 feet is required. The addition, the proposed addition is a zero-foot setback. And the same for the north side, interior side yard, five foot is required, zero feet is being proposed. And along the rear yard, five feet is required, zero feet is being proposed. The, the size of the building also triggers a requirement that they have one loading dock, a short loading dock. They're proposing none.
I conclude the staff presentation for this time. Will be available for questions after that. Okay.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. So, at this time, I will open the, the floor up to anyone from the public who would like to ask questions of, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We need the presentation from the petitioner. Is the petitioner here? My apologies. Getting ahead of myself.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Mike Chikazian. Thanks, everyone, for being here. And thanks, special thanks to Michael and Scott especially, who've really helped guide us through the process and have been very helpful. A brief background on me, I grew up in Wilmatt, right off of Isabella, right by, on 17th Street, which is Marcy in Evanston. So going to Central Street in Evanston very often. I think it was 1978, I got my Schwinn Mag Scrambler over on Central Street, which I still have. Pretty awesome. And Baskin Robbins 31 flavors was right there, and I, we used to play at Willard School. So, that's where I'm from. So with me is Nick Hines and Scott Frank. And our, with these guys, a little history, we have built, over the last eight years, we've built, we have three successful restaurants, operating restaurants right now. The Dock at Montrose Beach, which is in Chicago, on the beachfront. Cafe Oliva, also on the beachfront, right by Navy Pier, at Ohio Street Beach. And then in Wilmatt, we have Napolita, pizzeria and wine bar. So these restaurants have been operating for a number of years successfully, and, which is why, the only reason we try to do another one is because we've, we've done well. We have a good team of managers and staff. We've done a nice job. We're also in the process of building a restaurant, also in Wilmatt. There will be a fish restaurant, oyster bar, that's under construction, should be open later this year. So we're hoping that the Double Clutch Brewing Company is our, is our fifth restaurant that we're doing as a team. The three restaurants that we have currently are, employ more than 100 people, and generate over half million dollars in sales tax dollars last year. So we're hoping to add to those numbers. So, this would be our first brew pub restaurant, of course. So this concept came together over the past year. We purchased the building about a year ago, and E-Town CrossFit is the tenant there. And E-Town informed us they were going to leave in September, October. And so this plan got, with our, with our partners and staff and consulting with a lot of different people, we formulated the plan. And the help of the Evanston staff, we kind of, this plan kind of came together, and we decided that this is what we want to create. We felt that this is a, this location doesn't have other restaurants or that type of things, that we thought we needed a destination, and we needed something to bring people in. And we thought that having a brewery would bring people into a restaurant that's there. We don't think a restaurant could survive easily in that location without something to bring people in. We think a brewery will bring people in, and we think the car theme, having some very interesting cars that are on display, will also bring people into this facility. So the plan is to have the restaurant in the front open on a daily basis, seven days a week. We would, we would love to have it open for lunch and dinner, provided we have the business to do so, and we'll, we feel that, we feel that we can do that. And then, the event space to the back there can be, can operate a separate event while the restaurant is still opening, open, because it's, we, we prefer not to shut down your restaurant when you have an event. You never want to have a restaurant, you know, if your customer goes to a restaurant and is shut down for an event, that's a very negative thing. You'll turn off your customers. So the plan is to be able to have the restaurant operate and have an event going there. And then the, the area where the cars are, if we had an event large enough, we can move all the cars out and use that for an event too. So we could have a larger event where we could actually have, like, if we could, if we did weddings, for example, we would have seating on that side, and then have the event side there more for the dancing and the party after the wedding, or after the, after a seated So this is, the concept is to build a micro-brewery. This is a very, relatively small brewery, similar to what, similar to what Smiley Brothers did. We're looking at 15-barrel brewing systems. And the idea is to have the brewing in the back, and the fermenting tanks behind the stage, so they're on display. We think it would be a really neat feature. And we actually have serving tanks, which are additional steel vessels up in the, actually in the front. So that's part of the ambiance to see these. We also plan to have bike racks, electric car chargers, solar panels, as long as the building can support, and it makes sense. And we also have a number of options on how to reuse the spent grain, to recycle the spent grain, which is the waste result from brewing. So, that's all I have, Nick. Anything to add, Nick?
I think I have all of them.
Okay.
Special with the neighbors?
Right, we, right, we've talked to a bunch of our neighbors, and we, we've had a lot of support from the property owners across the street, between the, the dog, the dog daycare business and Evan, Tracy from Evanston Imprintables, and Charlie, who lives next door to us, and, and he has the car repair business, and Buffy and John, who owned a bunch of properties there. And we met with Pastor Dillard just this week, and everyone's been very supportive and, and helpful. And Phil Holm, who's here in the audience, who we bought the building from.
All right. So that's it?
Yep.
Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. So, now, if anyone would like to ask questions of the, of the petitioner, now is the time to do it. Is there anyone? Please come to the podium and state your name and where you live.
Hi, my name is Kellyanne Alcott. I live at 1519 Simpson Street. I can see them out the back door. I'm concerned about a few things. Noise level for a brewery, anything that involves alcohol, I'm very concerned about when the people leave your property, where they're going, how drunk they will be, how loud it will be. Parking, major issue. Where are, where are people going to park? Are they, you can't tell them not to park on the street. Will we have to now change our parking because you're going to move in and have this ongoing slew of people coming into the neighborhood? I also have, I would, I would love to know where you're planning on putting all these cars that you say you're going to valet.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Would you mind speaking into the microphone? I want to make sure I can fully hear your comments. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Can I ask so many questions? And will they be able to respond? Oh, okay.
Can we answer one at a time?
Yeah, I was wondering if that would be a better way.
So with the parking situation?
Sorry. Sorry. I'm not done, no. I have a number of questions.
Okay, so, shall we just write it down? Or, I think that would be the best way to do it.
Okay.
So you get the general flow of the?
You get the general flow of the, the questioning, so.
So, yeah, noise level, street parking, there's an unpaved alley where you're, there's stone, what does it say? Crushed stone roadway, which is an unpaved alley. How are you going to address that, with the constant, now there are going to be more vehicles in that alley, so erosion is going to happen even more often, and the city does have a schedule for when they're planning on doing all the paving all the time, or when they're repaving, or whatever they call it, when they put sand on there that constantly erodes. So there are a couple of churches, like, three churches within two blocks of there, and whenever those churches are actually in session, which is usually on a Sunday, there's no parking in that area at all, already. So to add another pub there, and another business there is already an issue.
Let's please keep it as form of questions now, and then I think that kind of statement is a?
Oh, how are you going to address that, the parking issue, because of all of these things?
When, when the churches are in session?
Yes.
Okay.
Especially when the churches are in session, but also parking generally. Can you commit to hiring people from the fifth ward? Because as you are part of the gentrification of the fifth ward now, I think that's something that, giving back to that community specifically, would be helpful if you're planning on coming into the community. So, those are my questions.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. So, all right, please.
My name's Nicholas Hines. I have tried to put all these together. So, first off, in terms of parking. We have 26 spots on the facility itself, so for, 29, oh, 29. Apparently, we're able to fit a few more than I thought. So we have 29 spots on the facility itself, so in terms of your normal day-to-day operations, that should be sufficient enough, because it's not a, it's not a huge facility for the brew pub itself. For special events, we've already spoken to Pastor Dillard in the neighborhood, and we've, actually are currently working with him, and then hoping to speak with the Jehovah's Witnesses and a few other people, where we're going to try to not be open during their services on Sunday, and then in, in, so they could use our facility, and then do a little bit of an exchange with them in order to possibly use their parking lots during special events, because they won't be in, in service, you know. During our normal special events will be at evening, in the evening time, so they won't be in the middle of service, so their lots are generally empty at that time. And he seemed very open to that. So that's one of the things for the parking, because we're trying to not have too much parking on the streets, because that's just a nuisance for everyone. So, working in conjunction with our neighbors is, is going to be our number one goal in terms of that. In terms of valet, we've already, we have a few different companies that we've worked with in the past who have been very reasonable, including Red Top and a few other ones, so we, that won't be a problem to provide them. And then, we're going to work out a deal with the neighboring churches and other facilities for their actual parking lots. In terms of the noise, one of the big problems with noise a lot of times is having an outdoor patio. We do not have one. It's not open, there's no service outside whatsoever. It's all inside the actual facility. That's part of the reason why, if you see in the front, one of the proposed variations is for the front setback, so it actually is fully encompassed in the front there. So, everything is inside, everything is compacted, and there's no outside parties, no loud music, nothing like that. And then on top of that, that, it's, this isn't meant to be, you know, like a frat party-style facility. This is more craft beers, craft food, just people are really, you know, foodies and beer connoisseurs, rather than, you know, just people trying to go and get rowdy, for the most part. So, also, in terms of the alley, you're concerned of the paving and breaking up of the gravel because it's an unpaved alley. Well, they, we're not using that alley. The only time that you'd be dealing with that is maybe once a day for a delivery, whether or not, whether it be for the beer, beer deliveries, for the, the ingredients, or from Cisco, or whomever, or any of our vendors are. And that, that would be it. So you wouldn't have a consistent stream up and down that unpaved alley. What else? And in terms of the fifth ward, employing people from the fifth ward, I'm, I would absolutely love that. We already spoke with the Alderman. We want to put a, you know, one of the ideas that Scott had, had mentioned was actually bringing people from the neighborhood for possible internship or tutoring almost, of learning the beer-making process as well, so that we can teach them, people to be assistant brew masters and things like that, and teach them a trade like that. And then also, what I've learned with all of our other restaurants, it's much, much better to get people from the area and the neighborhood in order to work at the facility, A, because of the fact that they know a lot of the people, they'll enjoy it, it's easy for them to get to work. Also, B, as an employer, it's great, because it's a lot closer to the, it's a lot closer to their home. There, it's more likely that they're going to show up and work hard and be there, and be respectful, because these are, there is, these are their neighbors who are with them. And so generally, they, you get a better work product out of the people for that as well. So, were there any other?
Thank you, Mr. Hines.
Thank you.
All right. So is there anyone else from the public who has any questions? All right. So, I'll now entertain questions from the Plan Commissioners. I just want to clarify that, that our role tonight is the text amendments. It is not the approval of the, of the variances that they're, they're seeking. All right? So, so to keep it focused, probably we should stick with, with that kind of, that kind of mentality. So, anyone have any questions? Commissioner Isaac.
In the, sorry, in the definition of brew pub, there is, it says, "either for consumption onsite or offsite in handicapped sealed containers." And I guess I'm wondering what handicapped sealed containers are, as an initial question.
I think that, I, no, okay. Either, either can, either can do that. Go ahead, please. Mr. Hines.
So, generally, what that means is, at a lot of different brew pubs, Ram and Rosemont, pretty much any of them, what they'll have are Crawler's or Growler's, which are basically, beers are poured into a container and then sealed up in carbonate inside its own to-go container. So it's not an open consumption container. It's literally packaged right in front of them and then sent to go and sold for distribution.
With that, with the heater or whatever?
Yeah, there's just like, yeah. So it's a heater, yes.
Is, do you feel like that description would stand the test of time? In five years, that it's going to be appropriate description for what a brew pub will be doing?
In five years, I can't say, just because you see so many different things change. There might end up being a quicker, more efficient, more simple manner of packaging and to-go. At the current time, I just don't know of one, or haven't heard of one.
Okay.
And it's, and they've been doing that for well over a decade, and it's been pretty much the standard up until then, so.
Thank you.
There is a transition from Growler's to Glass Jugs.
No, please, please, if you're going to speak, can you, and, and state your name, please, also?
I'm Scott Frank.
Okay.
Member of a crew of the Brewer. So, handicap to me does sound more like the Growler's, which are the glass containers, where they literally are threaded on. They use a heat seal to shrink, shrink wrap the lid to keep the carbonation in. A lot of brew pubs are moving to aluminum cans, so you actually have a much more simple press, which can, you can fill this, I believe they're 24-ounce cans, and you can, or maybe they're 32, I'm not sure. I know a Growler's 64, I believe the cans are 32. You fill them up right off the tap, and then they have a more manual press that seals it. And then when the, when the patron goes home, they can open it like a can of beer and pour it. This handicap speaks more, and my impression of that would be of the Growler variety, not the Crawler with a C. I hope that.
It, it does. If, if you were, if you were suggesting what language would be appropriate for a, for this other system that you're talking about?
I don't know. Nick, you might be better with, with that language, but something that's, that... Nick, you might be better with that language, but something that more loosely applies to both forms of distribution, right? That's what you're saying? A looser description?
I think we can maybe... I'm not sure.
I mean, it is handicapped.
I think we can, yes. We can come up with something if that's a concern.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So Commissioner Goddard, you had... You had something?
Could somebody explain to me what the other areas that would be impacted by this tax amendment would be?
So staff, I think that is...
Is that a staff question?
I think that's a question for staff. So that's the MXE, the MU, D and MU districts, I believe, is the language. And Commissioner Goddard, are you also talking about where they are as locations within the city?
Yes. I would like to know what other areas would be impacted should we pass this tax amendment.
So areas along with zoning districts.
Sure. To summarize that, the table on the screen here shows where restaurants are currently permitted, and so that's starting at the B1, going down through the D4, and then also Research Park, and the I1, and special use in the I2 and I3. So the kind of change there, and we've been treating businesses that are currently operating as brew pubs, Smiley Brothers and Packaged Pig, as restaurants currently. So nothing would change with those. The brew pubs would still be allowed in those same districts and would be treated similarly in the remaining districts. So really, the main change is in the MXE and MU district. MU is still on the books, but there's no existing MU-zoned land. So it is just the MXE and the MU that would be affected. If we take a look at that on the map on here...
That's what I want.
Sure. Sure. And so all of these on the map are MXE districts, with the exception of the area just north of Main Street along Custer, where the Bedard property and Evanston Lumber are located in that area. That's the only existing MU area within the city. So the largest area with MXE is the area that we're speaking of this evening, north of Simpson to Green Bay there and over to Dewey. And then there are several small areas, some of them are just one parcel along the old Mayfair Railroad line, and then a couple additional parcels or properties along the railroad on Custer. So those are the ones that would be... There would be most of a change. These would be areas that currently you're not allowed to have a restaurant. We're proposing that you'd be able to have a brew pub in those locations.
Any other questions? So I guess I have a question for staff, which would be if we're allowing brew pubs within this area, which allow... Which are being defined as allowing type-one restaurants as an accessory use, why is it not being proposed to allow restaurants to have the same privileges?
I think that's a good point, Chair Lewis, and I think staff would be amenable if the zoning board feels that restaurant should... Sorry, the plan commission feels that restaurant should also be in those districts. I think that is a good recommendation.
So any other questions? Commissioner Halleck, no? Okay. Okay. All right, so I think that is all for the plan commission questions. Now, by the same charge, by the same charge, the zoning board is related to the questions of relief, so I will open it up to questions.
Thank you. Questions from this side? I know there are going to be few.
I have some questions about the operation of the business. How many seats does this proposed restaurant have?
And the way that we... Sorry, the way that we do this is we will ask... We'd like to ask you guys questions, the applicants. And so just come on up, and we're just going to go back and forth really quickly.
So we're anticipating... The details have to be worked out, of course, in construction drawings, but we're anticipating that the front restaurant have 78 to 80 seats, something like that.
So in that drawing, that's 80 seats?
No, I don't know.
Is it including the bar?
Yep. I actually didn't count the actual tables. It's more just based on the amount of space we have.
Okay. Because you're showing 10 tables at four seats, right, which is 40 people? And you're thinking then 40 at the bar as well?
Maybe less, so maybe 65, 70, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And your event space holds how many?
Well, we're looking for up to 300.
Is it large enough for that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think so.
Your hours of operation were again?
11:00 AM till midnight, and then Friday, Saturday till 1:00 AM.
Till 1:00 AM.
But in general, our restaurant, our other restaurants, we have... Those are the allowable hours, but very often, like Nopelita Pizza, for instance, will probably be closed at 9:30 tonight, just based on when the business dies off. I doubt it's going to be open till midnight every night.
Okay. My other question is about the packaged goods. You're packaging... You're just doing beer, not wine?
We are serving... No, we're in a full bar.
Okay.
But we're only producing beer.
And that is available for packaging to go out, just the beer?
Yeah, well, I... You know, it depends on the liquor license, you know? I actually don't... Let Nick handle this, okay? Thanks.
So, no, that is not... Anything other than the beer that we produce is not being packaged and sold. A lot of the liquor codes allow for, say, if someone doesn't finish a bottle, that you have the bags that you can seal up and leave, but you can't... We're not going to be selling and just handing people for them to leave. It's basically what the remainder of what they've ordered and drank and consumed at the restaurant, they have... Usually, there's a part of the liquor ordinance which allows you to... They have these specialty bags that you can... You literally can put them in there, fold them up, seal them, take it, so that basically it's not officially an open liquor container when it's taken home. So that would be the only way, other than our own beer that we're selling, that's the only thing that would be going on.
And your beer would be what you described, that you would heat seal?
Correct.
And anyone could come in and just buy that and not just eat there? You could just come and purchase that like over the counter? You have a counter to be able to do that?
Correct.
How much beer do you intend to produce?
I think it was...
What was it, 800 barrels?
Approximately...
Approximately 800 barrels during a year.
During a year?
Yes, for the whole year.
I think Smiley Brothers is going to hit 1,000 barrels this year.
Okay.
And we don't have the foot traffic, the location that they do. Our target is 500 the first year, and 1,000 would be great for us, but probably more realistically, you'd be in the 800-barrel range.
Okay, you anticipate being less than Smiley?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And of the beers that people can come in and just buy, a Growler or a Crowler, whatever it is, they can come in without having to eat there, right?
That's correct, yes.
What portion is that of your business?
You hear from most of the people we've spoken to, it's about 10% to 15%. A majority of the people who have... Who get them are actually sitting down and ordering and eating, and then when they're leaving, they're like, you know, "I really like that beer, and I'd like to take some home." That's... I'd say almost all of the Growler's and Crawler's, that's what generally happens, are people hang out, try something they like, and then decide they want to take some home to keep it at home.
Thank you. I have a few questions for you. You spoke briefly about the parking arrangements that you are working on in the neighborhood. Do you anticipate that those will be formal agreements that you draw up? You know, you've had initial conversations. Do you expect formal agreements?
Truthfully, we could do a formal agreement. We wouldn't be... We would not be against that. It's going to be more up to the, you know, to the churches and other groups, whomever they would be.
And did I hear correctly that one proposed... Part of the discussion with the nearby church was that you would perhaps not have your larger events at the same time that church, they're using their parking lots for church?
We spoke with them, their main service was at 10 o'clock on a Sunday, and that is... We're not planning on being a big brunch place, so we would be completely open to allowing them to use our parking lot as well if they have overflow, because it sounds like it gets pretty congested there during service time.
And then I appreciate, from the noise perspective, I appreciate that you're not going to have an outdoor patio, but having worked in banquet service through my college years, I know, you know, might... So you'll have DJs. Will you also have live bands at times?
Occasionally, we would.
In your... As you're building onto the building, are you considering noise abatement or containment materials? Can you describe those?
Yes, we actually have spoken with our architect, and they've said about... Are they called baffles, or putting baffles up on some of the walls, things like that, to just deaden some of the sound, things like that. And maybe... And I know that a lot of it's already spray-foamed, so I know that the R rating on that keeps some of that inside as well.
Okay. And can you describe your daily deliveries, where they're happening, in the number?
I can just speak from my current... The current facilities. We generally will get... With Nopelita, we'll get about two deliveries a day, but that's because we go through many different food vendors. For this one, it's more the beer-centric versus all of the food, so a lot of our stuff is going to come from one or two purveyors for the food end. So usually, depending on whomever they are, we would probably get three a week, and those which deliveries, they do it whenever we request it. So if they're doing, say, if they go to momentum and they drop off ours, it's usually about 9:00 to 10:00 o'clock in the morning, Monday through Thursday, sometimes Fridays if we need it. And then for deliveries for anything else, generally, you get it sometime before 2:00 and just during the regular workday between 9:00 and 2:00. And so I'd say... I'd say you could anticipate about a grand total of between six and 10 deliveries throughout the entire week, so at the most, two a day.
And did I read... Did I understand correctly that for your larger events, those are going to be catered offsite?
No, no. What it would be, we'd have preferred catering companies, and then our... Basically, our kitchen would be used as a staging kitchen for whomever would be coming in, because it's not a large enough facility for us. If it's a 300-person party, we don't have the facilities to cook 300 steaks or 300 chicken dinners, things like that. So that's what we've done with some of the other places, where we know that we can accommodate that. We would... We have Blue Plate, J&amp;L, a few different ones, and they'll come, and they'll bring everything, have it staged, and then come out, so...
Okay. And I assume you're aware of the city's sustainability practices and have agreed to follow those regarding recycling, et cetera?
Absolutely. That's why we... Our general... Our proposed general manager, he was the general manager of Empirical Brewery in Rogers Park, and he stated... He's already got the name and number of about four different farmers, and what they would do is, when they would have the byproducts from them, they would send out to the farmers, and then one of the four of them would... They would just basically say, okay... Or not for bakers, sorry. So the bakers would come and pick them up and then use them for any other, you know, for their own uses. So that would be just for recycling of any of the byproducts from the brewing systems. And then also, one of the big things for our place at Montrose, I know for sure, we had a ton of bike traffic, so we're going to have tons of bike racks up there because, especially with a brew pub and being a neighborhood, you're going to get a lot of bikers, I believe, coming to the facility, so...
And finally, so the valet parking would queue up on Ashland Avenue in front of the facility? I'm just wondering then how... You know, it's a tight street. The geometry of that street is fairly tight, so if you have, you know, cars sort of queuing up and waiting for valet service and then through traffic, I'm just considering how that would all take place.
Well, I mean, for... In terms of... Say, in the worst case scenario, it was a 300-person party, you... When you do the math, you just figure at the absolute most, you'd have 100 cars, and so we would start and try to get people to pull right in there and almost use our parking lot as staging if we have a deal with one or the other one, so that the valets would take it out of there instead of blocking the entire street. So...
Thank you.
No problem.
I do have a question regarding valet. So when you have your valet parking, is it going to be contained into that parking lot?
That's what the goal would be. That... It would be contained, pulling in there, but if it were for a bigger event and we knew what was going to be coming, that's when the deals with one of the... Any of the other churches, or Water Rack, or whomever else, with those different parking lots that we could work on a situation.
Because you also have football practice in that park, which is right across the street, on a regular basis. So cars coming in and out have to be cautious of all the kids that are in, the families and everybody else that basically use that park.
That's why one of the things... The general... Most of the... In general, the times where a lot of these special events are going are generally in the evening time, so...
That's when they practice.
Oh, okay, so...
In the summertime?
Summertime, yeah.
Yeah, well, not summer, but in the fall, they do have evening practices.
Okay. So we would definitely make sure that we would put a safety plan in place for that to ensure from anyone coming to and from that. So we... Any suggestions, we would definitely be open to.
Yeah, if you could talk to whoever runs the practices there to see if there's going to be a conflict with a practice and a big event.
Absolutely.
Considering that. Thanks.
I have the following question. On this sketch, are your garbage containers in the back where the cars are?
No, no, the garbage containers will be... It's going to be in the...
If you see on the right-hand side, the containers are in the back by the cars, that's outside the building.
Yeah. Are these your garbage containers?
Yes, those are garbage containers, yes.
So in the event that you have a large event, are you going to clean them immediately after the event? Do you have contractual agreement with?
Right, well, we have... Yeah, at our other restaurants, we have daily pickup.
You'll have daily pickup?
Daily pickup.
So you will be using the alley for a daily pickup?
Yeah, for garbage trucks, sure. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I got a couple for you. So let's go... Let's stay on parking, on that alley for a little bit. So we know that you've got deliveries coming down, two deliveries three times a week, right? So that's far more than what they've got going down that alley right now. We also now know that we've just added a garbage truck every day.
Yeah.
We also know that we're going to add some valet traffic.
And the valet won't be going through that because it's going to be sealed off over there.
Okay.
So it'll be going through Ashland.
Okay. So what we've just added will definitely deteriorate that alley. Do you guys have a plan for that?
One of the things... I mean, we could definitely... Doing a gravel fill really isn't that big of a problem. We currently do that with one of our buildings in Skokie, where we work with the company Heinig Construction, and they do a lot of that, and we've contracted with them. So in the case that we would actually need to, we already have that direct contact that wouldn't be a problem to bring them in and do that.
Okay. So is it fair to do that on an annual basis? To maintain that alley in a usable condition on an annual basis?
If it ends up being... Because a lot of that ends up depending on how the winter is, too. Because what we've seen, because we're one of our warehouse that we have is, it's some years, there's been... It's been pristine, and then other years, when it's very snowy, very, you know, a lot of heavy traffic and things like that, then it gets really bad, and that's when we always end up doing that. So a lot of it depends on the weather conditions, but absolutely, if it's... It's in our best interest to have that thing, you know, no potholes, because the last thing we also want to hear, trust me, a lot of the delivery guys are... Get a little cranky if they have a bumpy ride, so we're all on board for that.
And for those deliveries, right, since you're asking for no loading dock, how long are those deliveries blocking the alley?
No more than five minutes. I mean, oh, yeah, no, if you have...
You can get a delivery in five minutes. I don't believe it.
At Montrose Beach, I get...
I don't believe it.
I would also mention that they don't have to block the alley, because if you see, we've got about... We've got like seven, eight feet where... On the side of the building. So if they pull in where the... They can pull off the side there. They shouldn't have to block it. The alley's pretty wide.
Where do you have seven or eight feet off the side of the building?
We park... We've been parking in this alley, you know, right now, and there's plenty of room for another car, even with a garbage truck there. We can get... You can get around it in some places, like in back of our building. If the garbage cans were not like doubled up like that, if it wasn't back at the door, you'd be able to fit a car and easily get around it.
Right, but your garbage cans are going to be doubled up like that. Are you going to move those garbage cans just when you have deliveries?
Because that garage door does not have to be open, so they don't have to be doubled up, actually. That garage door is only opened from time to time.
The one good thing is with... Without that truck, you can... They can just basically take it out and put it right into the door where the room is there, and then our... Usually what it is, is the kitchen staff brings it actually to where it goes. So that's why with all my other places, it's not... They don't take it and put it into my fridge or do anything like that.
Okay.
They basically just drop it off, and my people... They basically just drop it off, and my people go and put it away. That's why, I always want them there as little as humanly possible, because dealing with the Chicago Park District, especially with, my one at Ohio Street Beach, where it's on Ohio Street, and it's in, or it's on Grand right there, it's a nightmare because you have the water rack, you have, and you can't be there because it's federal property, and then across, right at the foot of Lake Point Tower, they're crazy, so we basically, these guys are unloading and running, bringing stuff in, so. So that's, because we've got the police department and the park district, that is non-stop, so.
Right.
I make sure that they are quick with the deliveries.
We talked about noise briefly and about some baffles for interior space, so because this is all non-smoking inside, right? Let's imagine a, a party, a wedding, and there are 30 people outside smoking, having a, having a fun time at 10:00 or 11:00 on a Saturday night. How do we stop that? How do you deal with that? Because we know that happens, right?
Yeah.
That's, that's a reasonable expectation, that there are people at a party who will smoke, they can't smoke inside, they're going to go outside, they're going to hang out, and they're going to have, they're going to talk.
The only way would be have someone from, one of our staff actually out there monitoring and making sure that people are keeping it down and not being loud and rowdy and things like that. That's the, truthfully, the only way to actually do that. You designate an area where they can actually go, and then make sure that you have someone there at all times, especially for a larger party.
Okay, and that's something you're willing to do?
Yes.
And have you guys had a banquet, this is your first banquet facility, right?
Well, at, at Montrose, we, we do 500-person buyout parties and things like that, so we've had, you know, Chicago Craft Beer Week, had their big thing there, Half Day, or Half Acre Brewery had their big tasting there a couple of years ago. We had, we've had the Huey Lewis concert, a bunch of concerts and things on the lakefront, so.
Right.
High volume and catering and stuff like that, we're not.
Slightly different, because you're not right up to residential, right? You get a little bit, you got some buffer zone.
Yes.
So people are less irritated by.
Correct.
A, smoking, and B, loud smoking.
Yeah.
The other concern, right, is obviously kitchen staff, right? When they take breaks.
Yeah, absolutely.
They're going to head outside, and they're going to smoke too, right?
Well, one of, one of, one of the big rules I have is, you're not, if you're going to go and you need a smoke break, you're taking a walk. Because there's nothing that anyone hates more in the world than seeing a kitchen staff member outside, having a cigarette on their break or anything like that, or at least that's what I, I just do not like to see. So no matter what, I say, okay, it's your 15-minute break, and you go for a nice, long walk, because I don't want people seeing that, it's bad, it's bad publicity for your restaurant, especially when they're, you're wearing your uniform, they're seeing you just huffing down a cigarette and things like that.
Okay.
But the kitchen staff, they're taking a walk every time.
Okay. Couple more questions on the special use, which is, where are employees planning on parking?
That is, during, during regular business hours, it shouldn't be too bad, but what I've done a few times is designated, found different parking spots and working something out with a neighbor in renting sometimes facilities, because, well, you know, for a lot of our places, we have, you know, serious parking issues, so. But, so I mean, I've, I've made people park a mile away and ride their bike in, but.
One other thing that was, one other thing that was mentioned to us on parking was that the water recommendation has a lot that's like a block and a half away, that could potentially be used. I believe is open to the public now. I, I know we just, we had discussed it in previous meetings, so that's another option. There are a number of, number of options, yeah.
Okay.
So that, that is a big one, because you also don't want your staff using what's used for, you know, supposed to be parking for the patrons.
Okay. Then let's move on to some question.
There is Walgreens there, too. Walgreens has a huge lot right on the.
Okay.
Regarding the variances for setbacks.
Yes.
Right? Talk to me about how, how, what's your hardship? And what other options have you considered?
Well, we're really following what the existing building is already on the property line, so we were just kind of being consistent with what was, what was there. That's really what triggered these variances. We are, we are on the property line to the, on the north side, on, and east and west. Well, the, I'm sorry, the west, we are going back a little bit further on the, I'm sorry, that's the east. So the, the building is pretty much already with, you know, it's requiring those based on the existing building.
Right, but what says you can't, tell me why you can't have those additions meet zoning requirements? Why can't you be five feet off the lot line? Why can't you be?
I suppose it's possible, but it gets, it makes that area very.
So, we have here, so.
I'm going to need you to talk into the microphone.
Yeah, apologize.
People love this stuff. They want to hear everything you say.
So, right here on Ashland, this is already on the property line.
Right.
So this part is not, again, this portion right here is.
Yep.
Which, truthfully, right now, is just a grassy area.
Right.
Where, I mean, truthfully, it would be a nice beer garden area for the outside, but that would also be a tough one to have for outdoor dining, because one thing that do noise that they were stating, and then also, it would be giving, it basically, oh jeez, sorry, there we go. Sorry, I'm not good with this.
Okay.
So, I mean, you're basically looking at an area that we figured to enclose and encompass in there rather than trying to make it a beer garden or anything like that outdoors.
Nobody's asking you to make it a beer garden. What we're asking is, why can't you comply with the zoning requirements? What is it that makes it impossible for you to comply with the zoning requirements?
Because currently, within those standards, you wouldn't be able to have a full facility simply because of the fact, you have a brew house, which takes up a giant chunk of space right there, which is about, I believe, 13 by. Sorry, I've, I've got the dimensions there, but that's the entirety of a brew house, and we were told that we're, we're really pressing on how much space we actually are using right now. They're like that, we were told by all the consultants that we've had, that this would be the minimum amount of space needed brewing. On top of that, we need the space for the, for the tanks there, additional tanks here. If you take all that into place, you wouldn't be able to have a separate restaurant and facility, a special fund facility, and pretty much wouldn't allow for us to do the special events.
So your hardship, to me, sounds like it's because you're looking for not only that restaurant brew pub, but also the banquet facility. So if you omitted the banquet facility, if you omitted the, the cars, you would have enough space to do everything you needed to do without needing the variances. Is that true?
What I would say is, don't we need, it was my understanding that we need the variance based on the existing building, so we are, don't we need the variance no matter what?
No, you need the variances for the two additions you're putting on the front and the back.
Okay, I thought, well, we have a non-conforming building is why, I guess, what I meant.
You do have a non-conforming building, but your additions need to be conforming, or you get a variance.
Right.
And so with a variance, they can be non-conforming. That variance has seven standards. Two of those standards are, it's the minimum change necessary, and one, and the, one of the others is, what is the hardship that is keeping you from meeting that zoning requirement?
Right.
Which is why I asked the question.
The hardship would be, financially, it would probably not be feasible if it were just.
A hardship that's unique to the property.
Unique to the property?
Sorry, technicalities, technicalities in the standards.
Yes.
So have you got, are, were there any other considerations for any other design on this? For example, doing a second floor and putting the banquet space on the second floor, so that you would have enough space for your brew pub and your restaurant on the first floor?
On the side over there, there, it's a giant bow truss ceiling already there.
Okay.
Which would not allow for a second floor to be put on top of that. Therefore, we would.
That's a hardship that's unique to the property.
Yes, thank you.
Give me another one.
I wasn't, I wasn't going to give you a hardship, but, but the reason we designed it this way is we were being, again, being consistent with the existing, we thought this was an appealing way to make it work.
Mary Beth, can I add something to that?
Absolutely.
So if they were to put an addition on the building with a five-yard setback in the front, it would be inconsistent with most of the rest of the buildings in the neighborhood currently, and, and it would be such a small addition. So.
Correct.
To maintain a single facade, I think, is, is aesthetically more pleasing, and it's more in keeping with the other buildings in the neighborhood.
As, as a matter of fact, across the street, yeah, the buildings are all right on the property line.
Right, but the building directly to the north matches the setback, right? That single-family house to the north.
Oh, it's way further back, yeah, yeah.
When you include the porch.
Right.
It's, it's a similar setback. Did you guys look at any other options for where to put these additions?
Well, we, yeah, we, at one point, we considered no addition in the front, but again, we were running out of space really fast, based on what we're doing.
So did you consider about anything else for the back? Did you consider any other place to put that brew pub? Did you ever consider not putting the cars, not having a banquet space, not doing any of that stuff?
We, we didn't feel that it would, we didn't feel we'd have a draw, it would be feasible, and we, it was, again, a long process to get here, and we, we feel that this is something that's going to be successful. Restaurants are not easy, and we think we have a good, we have, we think we have a good focus here. And so we felt, we felt, we, we felt that we needed all this to make it work.
So yours, so are you telling me that the banquet is a, is a key component of the business plan of this? The banquet space?
Yes.
And what part of, what component, what, what percentage of your business do you think it's going to be?
I mean, 30? Yeah, I was going to say, all right, good, we're consistent, 30%.
You think the banquet space is going to be 30% of your business?
Of revenue, not time-wise.
Of course.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because a banquet, you're, if you're serving, you know, a couple hundred people, it's a big, you can make, you know, more money.
Right.
Quickly.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other questions from anyone else? Okay. Thanks.
All right, beautiful. I think, I think, one, I have a quick question for Mr. Hines. What is your role again?
I'm partner, I'm a partner.
But, but you seem to be like the operations or the, I mean, you're speaking a lot about.
Well, I, I do, I do a lot of the operations, I do a lot of the day-to-day, and unfortunately, I spent a lot of time in the lakefront where we're trying to figure everything out originally, so.
All right.
And I know with the opening, so.
All right, and I believe Commissioner Hellick, you're, you're good now? Okay, all right, very good. Okay, so, so that will close the questioning. Now I'm going to open it up to statements from the public if they wish to make a statement. So statements will be limited to two minutes, I believe.
Kelly Ann Alcott, again. 1519 Simpson, right across from the new pub that's supposedly going to be there. That alley is, always has holes. The city will throw some gravel on it, and tomorrow it will be holy, so that's going to be a significant issue. I am, I'm actually also deeply concerned about the traffic that's going to happen there, and as a person who lives literally next to the parking lot that you want to use, and you said you spoke to Pastor Dillard at First Church, I think that's going to be a significant issue. I mean, you think you're not going to use the alley, but to get from one place to the next, if you're using the parking lot that the Jehovah's Witness Church uses, you are going to use the alley even more, because there's an, you go in the alley to get to the other section. So you believe you're not going to do it, but you will. And I also want to know if there's another, there's another semi-banquet place already there that's, that has, that's feasting and by, so I don't know if you, if you guys, are you guys going to be working with them in some way? Because I know they also have similar type events. And the smoking issue, I'm so happy that you brought that up, because it's extremely important. And I don't want to have to constantly call the police, or call, or get up and say, hey, there's a serious issue with this people outside, and because you think that you're not going to get frat boys, you're going to get humans, and humans are loud. So, and after you drink, you, you get even louder, and if you're smoking and congregating, it's even louder. And that's going to happen? This is a person who works in operations, I know that this is going to happen. So I just want to ask you guys to be mindful of how you're going to do it. And also, I, I don't have a problem with all the variant stuff. It will look better. It is a better look, it's true, sadly. You're going to lose that nice grassy patch. We have parks in Evanston, we're all right. But it is, it is, it will be aesthetically pleasing. Unfortunately, that this is going to be a big brick building, but make it pretty if you're going to do it. But seriously, consider how you're going to do the traffic, and if you're having 80 people in a restaurant, you think you're going to have 29 cars? Okay, I'll be watching.
Okay, thank you very much. I, I think it's fair to say, say, request them to be a good neighbor, right? That's what you seem to be asking, so. So would you like to, okay, so state your name and.
John Line Weber.
Okay.
When we began, we've developed six properties in, on, three on Ashland, three on Simpson. When we began working in the neighborhood in 1996, 22 years ago, there were five active businesses in the neighborhood. With our efforts in development, as well as Andy Spats and the Robinson family, there are now well over 75 businesses and residences in the neighborhood. Major component of our, of the spaces are live, work, live only, work only, or do both, with the exception of the B Strip on Simpson Street. We have been waiting 22 years for this type of business to come. We designed into our, the old Fanny's building a restaurant in hopes of bringing in a restaurant that could serve breakfast, lunch, be a meeting spot for the businesses and the people in the neighborhood, and, and met with little success there. So this type of facility is something that we've been waiting for. This type of facility will make a huge difference to what is now Evanston's Arts District. It does provide that opportunity for people to take somebody, a client, to lunch, to go out with coworkers afterwards, to go there and get lunch. We don't have that, though. We have, in the 1601 billion where Breville Productions is, they have over 75 employees in that building and no place to go. We see the delivery cars come and go constantly, and so this is a huge asset for this neighborhood, and it's something that we've been looking forward to. So I would all hope that you would support their efforts to bring this to, to the, to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Line Weber. Anyone else? All right, so I'll give one more opportunity for the petitioner to summarize or make a statement. Is there anything you want to, want to say? You don't have to if you don't want to, you know?
I'm trying to think if I could respond to a couple of the comments on, that we heard about with, as far as being a good neighbor. And, and we, we've dealt with this, in fact, at Napolita, we have, we have apartments across the street, and we've had, and we've had some noise issues, and when we have those issues, we, we, we figure out how to, how to make it right, because we, we definitely want to be a good neighbor. I really don't think we're going to have traffic in that alley very, very little, because our parking lot doesn't go through. So how would you, to use the alley, if someone's in the front, they have to go all the way around, I don't know why they would use the alley. Because our, our, none of the cars in our lot can, can go that, can get there. So I don't think, don't think that's an issue either, but I guess that's it. Thanks.
And if the alley does get torn up and holes, we will repair it and fix it as good neighbors as well.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, with that, I am going to close the public hearing portion of the meeting, and the first thing that we'll do is we're going to do the commission deliberation, and then we'll do the zoning deliberation. So I believe we're being asked to consider text amendments. Let's see. So, so the three things we're being, I think it's three things, we're, we're being asked to, to allow brew pubs as a permitted, as a permitted use within, within the zoning district, within the MXE, MUD, and MU districts, correct? Even though there is no MU district?
Correct. In addition to all, all the other districts that are shown on the table, but the, the new ones would be those, those M districts.
Those, those three, okay? So, all right, yes. And so brew pub is a new definition of which we would be, that's true, right? Are we, we're defining the language for what a brew pub is?
That is correct.
Okay. And then the third thing is, is that we're being requested to combine the definition of a craft brewery and a craft distillery microbrewery.
Yes. And then, and there'd be new definition for that combined, and kind of one substantive change in that definition would be allow the accessory type one restaurant.
All right, so add food service, type one restaurant to it. So, anyone want to start?
Well, this seems like a logical conclusion, I believe. We talked about microbreweries a couple of years ago, and this just seems to be an area that's growing. This is, seems to me like a legitimate addition to the code. I'm still concerned about what other areas would be impacted by this, but...
So, so I believe, I believe this is a, is a deletion and addition. It's a modification to the code. So it's taking what was the, you know, so, so the microbrewery is still there, it's just not having it separate from the...
It's like its big brother.
Right, exactly. Yeah. So, go ahead.
Yeah. I think the, I think the only, like, the only concerning issue is the, is allowing now restaurants in what's otherwise a manufacturing district. I think for, you know, personally, for, for this proposal and this property, I, I think it's a, I think it's a good fit. I liked hearing how other businesses that operate in the area were going to be able to benefit from having this, this operation in the neighborhood. You know, I guess the, the counterpoint to that is that ultimately, there aren't, there isn't really a lot of, of area that's covered by these manufacturing districts, where it's, where, you know, it could have an, an adverse effect to, to what was, you know, set aside as manufacturing districts. But I, you know, just as a, as a comment, that's, that's my, my biggest concern. But I, I think the applicant with respect to this proposal has, has overcome the burdens.
So, so we're not per se concerned about this application. We're writing the, the code that would be applicable from here forward to any, any instance. So, so, so I think your point is valid, is, is it a benefit to have restaurants within a manufacturing district? Or, or, or what I found odd was it's, it's simply the, the brew pub with the, with the auxiliary restaurant and not restaurants, you know? So restaurants are still not permitted by right within that area.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, is it beneficial or is it not? I think Mr. Line Weber has been involved in, I guess, within this area, and seems to think that it's beneficial. But is there a concern that, that what would be detrimental? Is that restaurants would take over the, the industrial area because of, or...
I mean, I was not, obviously, here for when the, when these districts were, were discussed and, and created. But I, I imagine that one would want to keep restaurants and other forms of, I guess, of retail and, you know, foot traffic, retail, commercial foot traffic from manufacturing areas. Because you want to have that, that type of manufacturing, that, that employee base for other types of businesses. But, you know, your point's well taken, that a brew pub is being permitted and a restaurant's going to be an accessory use to it. And so unless there's going to be fifty brew pubs in a three-block radius, it's not really going to, not going to affect the character of the manufacturing districts.
Right. So, so that raises a question to me. So manufacturing and I districts, they differ how in character?
So the...
I obviously allows as a permitted use restaurants in most of the, well, in at least one of the industrial, yeah, go ahead.
Correct. The I districts are industrial districts, typically a little heavier districts, although there are properties within those I districts that do also have a mix of uses. The, the building where Temperance is located on Dempster's is a good example of that, where there's both industrial businesses and then a whole range of other types of businesses. The M districts that, that we're discussing here, in the MXE where this property is located, are transitional manufacturing districts. So that's where they're intended to have that mix of uses. The MXE, reading from the zoning ordinance, is intended to address those distinctive areas in Evanston where manufacturing industrial uses have coexisted with residential uses in a manner in which neither have been affected adversely. You know, corporate uses currently located in the area while also permitting those uses normally associated manufacturing industrial operations. And, and we're talking about all the, the M districts throughout the city. This happens to be the, the largest area of that MXE district within the city. And there, there are a wide variety of uses currently. The zoning board heard a, a case just recently about a kennel and dog operation, there's auto repair, there, remember, the public stated there are a number of mixed-use buildings that have offices and also living spaces in those and loft-style living. So it's, it is kind of a characteristic where there's a mixture of uses within those districts. And brew pubs, some of the, the sort of cachet and character of those are having some of those characteristics similar to these areas.
Yeah. So, so I think the, so it seems to me the question is, is it beneficial to allow this kind of food service within this mixed industrial use? And two, you know, I'm, I'm wondering two, two things. Is it, is it restrictive to just allow, to allow a brew pub with, or, or is it with the, with the type one as an accessory use? Or should, should this area actually be allowed to have restaurants, type one and brew pubs? And I think the other question that is before us is, it's being requested to be a permitted use outright. If there was some control request, required, then we could make it a special use and allow these guys to go ahead and, and monitor the gates of how, how that area was used. So, any thoughts about? Commissioner Draper.
So I think that it's interesting that it's allowed in the industrial uses, but it's not allowed in this mixed use. So I think the question is, is the transition area, it's not allowed there because we've got some residences and that the industrial area doesn't have residential. I mean, it seems like if you're allowing it in industrial, then it, that seems enough to be able to allow it in this.
So, so I, I mean, one of the things that is controversial about restaurants or brew pubs is, I think, the hours of operation was one of the things. Because it is coexisting with residential and other, other, where manufacturing is usually, you know, on a, on a daily, you know, people go home, right? So, so that, that is one question, is the extended, if we allow it, then it would have extended hours, right? If we let it at permitted use, then is the, so for staff, is there a regulation on hours of operations within the ordinances of the city that would control it outside of the zoning ordinance?
Within the zoning ordinance, there is not. However, liquor licensing, which many establishments do serve alcohol, those liquor licenses do have hours of operation attached to them. So it's another procedure within the city code.
With special uses, we get to restrict hours. So if your concern is hours, we get to control that. We get to recommend that to city council and they get to make a determination. Let me be really clear about that.
Right, exactly. But, but that is a, but that is a ability to put a control with, on it, if that's a So, so that is, let's see. So the other, the other questions that we have, we're kind of dividing this up between, between the permitted use and then the definitions. Is there any thoughts about the combining of the two, two types of, the brew pub and the, and the micro-distillery?
I think it makes sense. I don't, I don't see any reason to continue to have two, two definitions.
Yeah. If I remember correctly, Commissioner Goddard, back when, a lot of the discussion was on how to regulate the volume of, of the, and they have two different standards for, the hard liquor has a lot less capacity than the, than the beer, which is larger volume. So how that, what the outcome was, I'm not really clear, yeah. So, so I, I don't know if it's become, so the definition of the micro, the, I think also the micro-distillery is defined in other locations and regulated. And that's one of the reasons why, why I think I remember it being separated from, it's part of the licensure requirements. Have you looked into that, staff, at all?
Wasn't a state?
It might have been state, yeah.
Legality that we were basing our...
Yeah, I think so.
There, yeah, there are, it's a good question. There are regulations in both the city liquor code that pertains to those types of restrictions, as well as within the state Liquor Control Act. At one time, the zoning ordinance did reference specifically the number of, and I forget if it was barrels or gallons. At this point, we're recommending just to be in compliance with applicable local and state and federal regulations. Because those, those numbers do move around at the state level, or have the possibility to move around at the state level.
So, so I guess what I'm asking is, if we change the definition, is it still consistent and tied in with these other regulations that are limiting, limiting those establishments?
The definition as proposed would, would still compliant with applicable local, state, and federal regulations. So we're referencing compliance with those as opposed to trying to...
Okay. But, but I guess my point was, is that those regulations refer to micro-distilleries and craft breweries and not brew pubs, or, or, I'm sorry, not whatever our new definition is, which is craft alcohol production facility.
That's true. When we're looking at different definitions across other municipalities, there is slightly different nomenclature in, in different areas as far as craft or micro. We thought this was a kind of a, a more generic label that encompassed all those things. So they still need a license from the state and still need a license from the, the city's liquor licensing for those. And they would have to license into those specific categories that are called that.
Okay. So, but they would be licensed as some other name? Is there, I guess I'm asking, is there a way to include in the definition that, that a craft alcohol production facility is either a craft brewery or craft distilled, you know, for the purposes of zoning, either a craft brewery or craft distillery, micro-distillery is defined elsewhere, you know? And just tie that in somehow in the wording of the definition? Or is that not needed?
I, I personally don't, don't think it's needed. The liquor licensing is, is pretty well regulated in the, in the city. And I think they're adding and removing different classes of licenses so often that it may not make sense to try to tie it to it.
Okay. So then the last thing we're being asked, I believe, is the definition of a brew pub, of which Commissioner Isaac had a issue with the word in handicapped, which, which I would, which I would, I would say, you know, for consumption onsite or offsite, in, in, in premises sealed containers or, or something, we're not, or just, well, just sealed containers could be, could be, you know, canned, typical canned, but, you know, premises, you know, sealed on the premises or something like that, whatever sealing method that is.
I think the, adding the premises is important so that it doesn't become a liquor store and they're just selling everything.
All right. So could you include something in that? Or should we craft the wording right now? Or try to come up with?
I think we can take a stab at, at, at working on that language to get to city council. I think we're clearing the tent that, on the site where the brew pubs located is the place that would be sealed.
Exactly. And we're not trying to limit it to handicapped as technology changes and standards change to make it a little more universal. Okay. So, so, so these three things, I guess we should handle them as three separate motions. Would you agree? Three separate deliberations or, or, or altogether? I'm, I'm trying to figure out how we should address them with the standards for amendments and then go for a proposal. So what, what do you see?
I think it's the discretion of the group. You could do three motions there. If you'd make one very clear, long motion, you're able to do that as well. I think when they travel to city council, travel in, in one ordinance.
Who can, who can, what page am I on? I, I am on a mixture of pages. I think it's page, and I don't see any numbers on the pages, but it is just after proposal, text amendment, the four, four points. And then there are, after that, the existing definitions and the proposed definitions.
I move that we accept staff's recommendation for a text amendment, definition change, and what was the third one? And the brew pub definition.
And then there's allowing the...
And allowing restaurants.
Restaurants as permitted or...
Special use.
Special uses.
Special uses.
Restaurants and brew pubs as...
I believe the staff's recommendation was that a restaurant would be a permissible accessory use...
Okay.
To a, to a craft alcohol production facility.
But restaurants, type one restaurants themselves would not be allowed either as a special use or a, as a special use, but brew pubs would with the ancillary. Even with the controls of the...
That was the staff...
Yeah, I, I know. But what, what do we see?
We are talking about such a small amount. If you looked at what these three areas are, it's so tiny. Why are we singling them out?
Yeah, why, that's why I think it's ridiculous to, to exclude restaurants.
I agree.
So, so my motion, if I were doing it, would include...
Okay, why don't you make the motion?
No, no, no. You're, you're doing a great job. So, so if you want to have, have restaurants and brew pubs as, as special uses, be permitted as special uses within the MXE, MU, and MUE districts. Is that...
I agree with your amendment to my motion.
Okay. Great. Okay. So I think we, we need to look at these in, in respect to the standards for amendments, which briefly stated would be whether the proposed amendment is consistent with the goals and objectives and policies of the comprehensive general plan as adopted and amended from time to time by city, city council. So, so is the, is the, the permitted, the, the use, allowing the restaurant and brew pub consistent?
Mm-hmm.
All right. And then the definitions as amended are. And the next item is whether the proposed amendment is compatible with the overall character of the existing development in the immediate vicinity of the subject property. So that's the, that's the discussion of whether restaurants and, and the mixed, mixed developments are, are appropriate.
And the, the motion is to make brew pubs and restaurants both special uses within...
I think that was...
That was your commissioner's motion?
Yes, that was my intent.
I think with making them special uses, that absolutely meets that, meets that requirement.
Okay. All right. Whether the proposed amendment will have an adverse effect on the... All right, whether the proposed amendment will have an adverse effect on the value of adjacent properties. I, I think we have some, some, some testimony that this is something that's been long sought after and within the area, so. And is the adequacy of the public facilities and services in the area able to support?
I don't think that's an issue.
The alley might need to get regravelled every once in a while.
To be, to be fair, you know, other manufacturing type uses could have, that wouldn't need to come and speak before us, could end up using the alley more than this, this facility would, so I don't see a, I believe the adequacy is fine.
All right, so we have a motion, and can you summarize the motion?
I'll give a try at summarizing. I think the motion has to do with accepting the staff recommendations to create a new brew pub definition with amended language as discussed with the on-premise sealed portion to allow brew pubs in all the districts where restaurants are currently allowed in the same way, and then with the difference being in the M districts, that both the brew pub use and type one restaurant uses would be special uses within those M districts. And then to create, accept the staff's recommendation to combine the definitions to create a new craft alcohol production facility.
All right, so Commissioner Goddard actually made the motion. Was there a second of the motion?
I second.
Commissioner Isaac. All right, so I think we're, we're ready to do a roll call vote.
I'm sorry, can I...
Yes, please.
Stop for one second. Given that the staff recommendation was to create a, create the brew pub in this area, in the, in the manufacturing area, as a permitted use, if we are recommending that a brew pub in general be a special use, is that going to require the applicant that's here tonight to have to come back and apply for a special use of the, special use in that, you know, for that facility?
Excellent question. Commissioner Isaac, we've noticed this hearing to be a special use for both uses, the brew pub as well as the banquet hall, in case that event came up, and the applicant's application was actually to make a brew pub either permitted or special use in this district. So we're covered whichever way the plan commission recommends.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's proceed with the vote.
Okay. Commissioner Goddard?
Aye.
Commissioner Halleck?
Yes.
Commissioner Isaac?
Yes.
Commissioner Draper?
Yes.
And Chair Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes five to zero.
Okay, so that concludes the deliberations of the plan commission. I will now hand the gavel over to Commissioner, to Board Member Chair Burns.
Thank you. So, as I'm sure you guys have just heard, we now get another special use to consider tonight. So we are now looking at the special use for a brew pub in this district, special use for the banquet hall, and then the variances. Thoughts, deliberations? How quickly can we do them?
I clearly am in support of this issue because of the need for economic development in the Hill Arts District. You know, my partner spoke this evening in support of this project, and I, evaluating the plan as it has come before us now, I think that it is definitely something that will help economic, economic development in that area of the city and is consistent with the city's overall comprehensive plan. So I would support both the variances and the special uses. Thank you.
I will support this too with several thoughts though. So here is the issue of parking.
Yeah.
And everybody will tell that it will continue to be an issue. So I would prefer that you guys have really either contractual agreements or whatever other written agreement for the, for the time. It may even go with the deed of the property, because you bought the property, but you have to resolve this. We are not happy when we leave things to chance. Maybe, maybe not. So this is one serious issue. The other thing, I am supporting your special use and the variances because, like some people in the room, we worked for this area to develop it, and we know what this will bring to the neighborhood. And really, there was no restaurant, and we, we couldn't make one in this area, and it was badly needed, both at the start of this area as a business development and, and now. So you will probably fill the gap. So that's why I'm a kind of tolerant to your, your request for the, both the special use and the variances, because I believe that your financial model will not survive without the variance. So I'm a kind of okay with that. I will afford one note just for you. If we can go to the floor plan, can we? So the thing that we worked on this street is to have storefronts. The fact that you are putting toilets on the storefront, I don't like. That's a personal opinion, but we wanted this city to be beautiful, and that's why we want to develop it with the storefronts. I don't think it's appropriate to have the toilets on the street. You should work with your architect, make a better layout for that. You will benefit of that. So that's my position. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for other members up here that are more familiar with that area and daytime's traffic, et cetera. Can you help me understand how the MWRD parking lot is used and how you see that being as part of the mix of the parking solutions here?
Sure, so the Park District in the City of Evanston leased land from the MWRD in order to put in a parking lot that would serve Twiggs Park, the start of the bicycle path, and the emerging business district in the Arts District. And typically during regular business hours, since so many new businesses have moved to the area, that lot is very full. It is also used, I have to say, by SUDS Car Wash and the automobile, secondhand automobile store across the street. They'll often move a bunch of cars there during the day, overflow traffic, which is why the city restricted the parking to no overnight parking. When the lot is available is typically after business hours. So my, I would, I would imagine...
With business hours being defined as nine to five?
Yeah, pretty much. So I would imagine that during business hours, that lot will be full and unavailable for use by this brew pub, but that after business hours, that lot would become much more available for use. It typically is empty because the car businesses can't use it because they can't park overnight. So when they close shop to go home, they have to move all of the cars out of the lot. There's no overnight parking, so all of the loft dwellers and, you know, other businesses move their cars out of the lot as well.
What does it look like on a weekend?
What's that?
What does it look like on a weekend?
On a weekend, it's, it's, again, SUDS is open on the weekends, so, and a lot of the, the churches and other businesses on the weekend will use that lot, but once again, when their services are over, they leave and go home, and very few places have services in the evening. I think Jehovah's Witness has a service on Wednesday evenings, and so what has happened over the course of the years is that several of the churches have bought single-family homes and torn them down and put in parking lots. And so, so the whole district there along Ashland and Simpson is, you know, roofing companies, construction companies, and then sprinkled with, with all of these lofts and businesses that have moved in. So that, the large lot at the top of the street is largely available after 5:00 PM. That would, would help to serve overflow for this business. And, and there are, once again, if they can make arrangements with the churches in the neighborhood, that would be very helpful. I know that another business in the neighborhood had parking issues and made arrangements with Family Focus to use their parking lot, because they have daytime activities. So there, there is availability in the neighborhood if, if people make arrangements with the other businesses.
And as part of our recommendation, if we choose to recommend this to city council, could part of that recommendation be incumbent, be predicated on them coming before city council with formal agreements in place in terms of...
I think it should. I think it's a big enough deal here. I mean, we're talking about a lot of cars, and I think it's a, they, they need to solve that and have a plan in place before, I, I would like to recommend to city council that we do that.
I would say overall, I support the proposal. I think it's a good proposal. I'm reassured that we have a seasoned operating team that is looking to invest in our community, and so that's welcome. We've heard testimony that this is an area that needs this type of, you know, this type of facility. In terms of the variances, I, I believe, I believe, you know, as, you know, stated by the applicant, that the banquet facility and the way they've laid it out is needed to meet their business model in terms of, you know, considering the variations here. So I'm in support of it with some thoughtful thinking in terms of the parking so that we don't see a negative cumulative effect in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
I'm actually in support of the, of the project, and I'm okay with the variances as well as the special use for both. I live in the fifth ward, so I please consider, like I was saying before, the kids and the residents.
Thank you.
I agree that this project is needed back here. I understand that it is a large project. It will bring a lot of people to this part of the community, people that have not been there previously, and so I want to say to the people that propose this to please work closely with the community. It's going to be a huge sea change. I'm looking forward to there being a restaurant back there. It's a great idea. I support both the variances and the special use.
Great, thank you so much. So in general, I, I agree with what everyone has said. I would like to see a couple of conditions put on this recommendation, a couple of good suggestions to city council perhaps, for these special uses. I do agree that we should have a formal agreement for parking. We do need to talk about hours, right? So I think for regular hours, I think 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday, and let them go to 1:00 PM on Friday and Saturday. I think there should be different hours for special events, and that those special events can go later. I do think that we should put in some noise abatement, because we know that's going to be an issue. We've had that an issue with indoor recreation spaces. This will have more noise than that, and we'd like to be good neighbors as well, so we'd like to encourage them by having it be a requirement. Also, their employees need to park offsite, right, and not on the street. And I do think the alley maintenance is a key component. I think that that, there's going to be a lot of traffic down there, and the daily garbage truck is going to be a killer. So I'd like to see that. And then the whole idea of the smoking area. Again, with a banquet and 30 people out there smoking, I think that's, that has the potential to be a real neighborhood irritant, and so I think that having that be as a condition would be helpful. I also love Carol's idea about the, getting, moving the toilets off the street. That is actually key, because that is a key component of making our streets lively, and that is one of the things we are so, we work really hard to make those street fronts lively, and if you, and by moving those toilets off the street, it would be a game changer. I'd love to require it. I don't think that we can. But Steph can get you in that direction.
Mary Beth?
Oh, we can't do that. Yep.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
So this is just a recommendation to city council, but can, can we require one of many businesses who use that alley to be responsible for its repair? I mean, you know, Hanson Roofing and...
Sure, we can have them be responsible for coordinating the repair of that street on the street, that, that alley.
I think we're asking if it's appropriate to ask one business to be charged with the upkeep and repair of an alley.
So what, what I'm hearing and what my sense is, is that right now Hanson isn't causing problems with the alley. Hanson's use of the alley isn't causing problems, and I can't ask you because we've closed the record. So that's what, there was no testimony that Hanson's causing the problems or anybody else on that, so the issue...
Yeah.
If there aren't, and if they don't cause problems, then they won't have to fix anything. It's just if they cause problems, then they have to fix it.
Well, I, I think that maintenance, you know, we can recommend to city council that
It's a recommendation.
The alley be maintained as part of their maintenance of the overall property.
Exactly.
That's fine.
Exactly. All right, so we are in agreement. There are three sets of standards I get to go through. You ready? We're going to go through, there are nine standards for a special use for a brew pub in an MXE district. So one, it is one of the special uses listed, specifically listed in the zoning ordinance. It is now, so that standard has been met. Number two, it is in keeping with the purposes and policies of the adopted comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance as amended from time to time. The comprehensive plan is set up to promote growth and redevelopment, and if this is not the definition of growth and redevelopment, I don't know what is. So I think that this absolutely falls within that, that, that requirement, that standard, so that has been met. Number three, it will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types in the immediate neighborhood. Now, we've gone ahead and proved to some other special uses in the neighborhood that when this is combined, could have the potential to cause a negative impact. I think that when we address things like parking, specifically by having those formal agreements, I think we can ameliorate those, and then we won't see that negative cumulative effect. So as long as those formal agreements are in place, then there won't be that negative cumulative effect. So I think that that standard has been met. Number four, it does not interfere with or diminish the value of the property in the neighborhood. There's been testimony certainly from owners in the neighborhood that this is the kind of facility that the neighborhood has long dreamed of, had tried and failed at it, and so that this will actually add value to the neighborhood, both from a use perspective as well as property value. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number five, it can be adequately served by public facilities and services. It is currently accessible via regular roads and alleys, and there is garbage pickup, which isn't relevant for a restaurant, but I do believe that there are adequate services in the City of Evanston to, to meet the needs of this property, so I do believe that that standard has been met. Number six, it does not cause undue traffic congestion. Now, certainly, there will be some more traffic in the neighborhood, but again, I think that with some of the things that, that the applicant has discussed, specifically the valet parking, and really paying attention to where you're parking and coordinating that with other needs in the neighborhood, specifically the, the football players and kitty corner from there, I think that you can deal with the problem. So again, with you dealing with the problem, I think that that standard can be met. Number seven, it preserves significant historical and architectural resources. Now, this doesn't apply because this is sort of a, an older building that has no true architectural significance to it, but I would like to comment here that if you can make it architecturally significant by having that invigorated elevation, where you have a frontage showing people having a good time and spending their money in Evanston, that will certainly be a benefit. So I think... So I think that that standard has been met. Number eight, it preserves significant natural and environmental features, which does not apply. And number nine, it complies with all other applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and other applicable ordinances. Now, in retrospect, I would say the same things about the special uses of brew pub as I would about the banquet hall. So can I use all those same arguments for the same thing? Fantastic. So we just did two in one. So can I have a recommendation to City Council with a whole bunch of conditions for those special uses, please? Do you want them? I wrote them down.
Go ahead, we'll help you.
There'll be lots of amendments, friendly amendments.
All right. Friendly amendments. I vote that we make a positive recommendation to City Council in the matter of ZBA 18 PLND-0064 to allow a special use of a brew pub and a banquet hall in the MXE mixed-use employment district and the, the three variances as...
Not the variances. We haven't gone over variances. Just special use, please.
The special use, as previously discussed, with the following conditions. One, that employees be required to park off-site. Two, that the...
Sorry, for friendly amendment, and not on the street.
And not on the street. Two, that the hours of operation be as followed. Mary Beth, you have those?
11:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday. 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Friday and Saturday, with special event times to go no later than 1:00 PM. 1:00 AM, sorry, 1:00 AM.
That before applicant goes before City Council, that there are formal parking agreements in place to accommodate off-site parking as needed. That the sustainability practices are followed as per City of Evanston regulation.
Infrastructure of the alley.
That, what are we asking in terms of noise abatement? That noise abatement be considered?
Yes.
And materials be considered in, in, in your additions so that, you know, noise does not carry throughout the neighborhood? And that the alley, how do we want to word the alley? I think you had some suggested language, Mary Beth?
Uh, I just think it's that they coordinate, that they coordinate with the, the businesses on the, that back up to the alley to maintain the alley yearly as needed. And then the last one was smoking. Designated smoking district, smoking area.
That there's a designated smoking district that is monitored by staff such that it doesn't become a negative impact in the neighborhood.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? And with that, your motion, your project goes to City Council with a positive recommendation. We are now going to go through your standards for major variation. There are seven standards for a major variation, and number one is that the request of variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use enjoyment or property values of adjoining neighbor, of adjoining properties. We've heard testimony that this project will in fact increase the, the enjoyment of adjoining properties, since they'll have a place to go for lunch. Also, that if they, if they develop this property with some of the requirements that we've put into these special uses, I think that they can limit the, any substantial adverse impact on their neighbors. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number two, the request of variation is in keeping with intent of the zoning ordinance, which is to promote growth and redevelopment and strengthen our economic base, and I do believe that that standard has been met. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. After a long time, we finally got it out, that there is a bowstring truss roof which prohibits the additions from going on to the second floor, and in Evanston, we love our bowstring truss, bowstring truss roofs. So that is, that, with that, we do have a standard that is met. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. If I remember correctly, we've heard some commentary from the board members that other restaurants have tried in the area and have failed, and that the, the banquet component is a vital and critical part of this in order to keep this business afloat. In order to get that, that banquet space, the space needs to grow to accommodate some of those other uses that normally would have fit inside the building. So I do believe that there actually is a hardship that is unique to this property, so I do believe that that standard has been met. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income, or there is a public benefit. Clearly, you're trying to make money, so you're trying to extract some additional income. We applaud that. We want you to be successful, but we do want the public benefit, and the public benefit is that you liven up the street, and that you bring people to that neighborhood, and you give them a place to spend their money and spend time in Evanston. And so that is the, the benefit that I see. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. The property was platted many years ago, long before the current owners bought the property, and the building was built that, in probably that same timeframe, so that standard has certainly been met. And number seven, the request of variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the zoning board of appeals. Again, this goes back to the, the business model, in that the model only works with a, a banquet component, which then requires some of those other additional spaces, which are being limited to the overall dimensions of the, of half of the existing buildings. So I do believe that that standard has been met. So can I have a motion?
I move in the case of, in the case of 18 PLND-0064, that we recommend approval to the City Council for the variations requested.
These are variances? We get to make the decision? So you're just moving for approval of the variances?
I move that we approve the variances requested in, for 2119 through 2125 Ashland Street.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? And with a vote of six to zero, your variances are approved. Good luck with your project. I will now, now that we are done, I will move that we adjourn this meeting.
Seconded.
To the chair, go.
Oh, it goes back to me. All right. Very good. So with that, I, we conclude the meeting of the Plan Commission on, well, if we have a motion to adjourn the meeting of...
That's what I did. We moved it and seconded it.
But this is for the entire, entire meeting, right?
Yes.
So the entire meeting is a motion?
I move, we adjourn.
Second? Okay. Moved and seconded. Voice vote?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Okay, let's go. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.